Budget meeting this evening, but before we get started, can we give a round of applause to Chris and Ed and to Agnes in the studio for the sound? If you think it's easy, it's not. So we want to thank you for all your efforts and Kelly, our city clerk, for trying to put this together so that we can make sure we have the capacity to have you in here this evening socially distanced and hear your comments. So I want to thank you all for being here. You can't hear me?
Me up here.
Well, I just gave all of you a compliment. I will restate that compliment, but thank you for all being here and for all of us team members that helped make this evening possible. So if we can, I'd like to ask city clerk Kelly to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Mrs. Jewett?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have an agenda. First part of that agenda is a presentation of the fiscal year 22 budget.
Good evening, everybody. I hope, do I have a mic?
You just got to speak directly into it.
People might not want to hear, but...
Yeah, they want to hear it.
Welcome, everybody. Good evening. It's really nice to see some of you. There we go, down the corner. In person, it's been a while since most of us have been able to gather here in person. And I like to start out with reminding us, well, of course now I can't, there we go. Let's talk about why we're all here. The mission of the city of Waterloo is to effectively and efficiently use the various resources of city government in order to help make Waterloo the best possible place to live, to work, to do business, to play, and raise a family for all our citizens. And I'm going to add on there tonight in an inclusive way for all of us. I also did some comparisons of Waterloo taxes to other communities. This slide compares Waterloo's debt load, or taxes load, I'm sorry, for fiscal 21 budget to the 20 largest cities. And you can see that Waterloo is in the lower half, and we are less than average. And if you look at our taxes per square mile, because we have a large area, we are the lowest of the largest 10 cities. If you look at our borrowing limits, we have the lowest, number four lowest of the top 10 cities. Our utility charges are third to the lowest of the top 10. Our city staffing is eighth lowest of the top 10. And then we get to our budget highlights for fiscal 22. As we all know, we've talked about it before, but public safety, primarily police and fire, make up the bulk of the general fund operating budget. On this slide, I have included the debt service levy. So when you include debt service, property taxes pay 71% of our property tax dollar goes to pay for police and fire services, or $13 of our levy rate. The debt service is $2.85.
And all your other city services that are paid with tax, property tax, total $2.21. That would come to a levy rate of $18.09, and that's 98% of your city share of your taxes. Then you may remember, we have two special levies that our voters voted in. The newest is for the grout museum district at 27 cents. And then we also have a special voted levy for the library. So that brings our total proposed tax rate to $18.63. I also did a breakout of the other category, since that covers so many other functions that the city provides. You can see the building inspections actually returns revenue and helps subsidize really primarily the planning department because they work together. Our public works area is 78 cents, and that's very few things. That covers primarily Met Transit and just a few other things. Health and social services, which is primarily our human rights department, gets 12 cents. Culture and recreation is the largest area of our other areas, and that is $2.58. Community and economic development, and that includes things such as planning, hotel motel tax activities, other types of community development activities at 17 cents. Our general government, which would include things such as the mayor and council's office, the clerk finance office, all our facilities maintenance, that's $2.19. Then there's some, the general revenue, we've backed off. Some of that's things that apply to all departments for $1.92. The state backfill is currently reducing our levy rate by 53 cents. And we're also proposing to use fund balance for $1.04. And that's how we make up that $2.21 of the 18. Again, here's our levy rate at 18.63. The increase to residential property is expected to be 3.49%, while commercial is only 1.04%. And we'll talk a little bit more about why that is in a little bit. And multi-residential drops again by 4.28%. It's a common question that I get, that people assume their property taxes should pay all the city's expenses, and they really don't. Property taxes now pay about 24% of our total expenses. The next highest thing is actually charges for services. So those are fees that people pay for services at 18%. We have some other city taxes, and that includes the local option tax, for example, and hotel motel tax at 9%. Licenses and permits at 1%. Interest revenue, which unfortunately is declining in the current market environment, at 1%. Federal funds make up about 8% of our budget. State funds, about 13%. Debt proceeds are projected to be 15% of this year's budget, and TIF revenue are 6%. And it's often a misconception that all your property taxes go to the city of Waterloo, and they don't. 45 cents of every dollar you pay approximately will go to the city. 34 cents approximately will go to the schools, and Black Hawk County gets 17 cents. And then there's some other very small assessments for Hawkeye Community College and a couple of other things at 4 cents. So when we talk about city services, what do my property taxes pay for? Police, fire, and building inspections. And I grouped building inspections in there only because the state does that in their state forms. That's all considered public safety. That's 62% of your property tax dollar is going to that category. Human rights at a percentage, the airport, which really is self-sustaining at this point in the operations, and parking, which is also self-sustaining, leaving Met at about 4%. The administration, we're showing at zero. Planning and economic development at 1%. And again, library, leisure services, Center for the Arts, this lovely facility we're in right now, at about 17%. And debt service at 15%. Of that money, 59% goes towards personnel, our actual employees. Another 20% goes to contracted services, and that includes things like utilities, consolidated dispatch, other professional services that we hire. We also spend about 4% on commodities, which is supplies and other actual things you need to operate, software, things like that. Our debt payments make up 16%, and then there's about a percentage of miscellaneous items. So then I thought I would talk a little bit about how, whoops, went too fast there. Well, we'll skip over how debt service is used. We're going to spend about $13 million on debt service this year. Nearly all of that, 11 million of it, is repaying bond principal. Interest rates are low right now. So while we will pay $2.4 million in interest, it's mostly principal. I don't know, I keep skipping ahead here, but I wanted to talk about how your taxes are calculated, but I'm going to have to go back here a minute. Just did it again. I got to go up to there, right? Yep. Sorry about that. Keep forgetting this button. Yeah. Okay. So this shows the change in your property taxes between fiscal 21 and fiscal 22. And I just used $100,000 assessed value of a home because you can kind of do the math with your own property if you know your assessed value. At 56% of your home's value is taxable this year, and the total levy rate for all the taxing bodies, I would include the schools, the county, all the other things we talked about, is we've estimated at $40.46. So your total tax bill will be $2,028.2 approximately. Of that, the city shares $1,051. $15.23 of that will go for the grout. And so that leaves our total increase, including the grout, at about $36 per year, or $3 a month for a $100,000 home. And that increase for a property, again, is 3.49%. And we've talked about this, probably most of the council remembers this, but property taxes are a complicated formula. The county assessor sets the property values, the state decides that rollback that we just talked about, that's the percentage of your value that's taxable. And cities, counties, and school districts then set their actual pieces of the rate. This year, the portion of your residents that's taxable rose to 56.4%. That's an increase of 2.42% this year. And that just shifts the property tax burden to residential and away from commercial. And you can see multi-residential, the state is making, forcing changes to have that. It used to be taxed as commercial property. It's going to start being taxed as residential very soon, so it's really declining. Then talking about the factors that affect this year's budget, our personnel increases, we're proposing adding a chief of staff position to the general fund, a few hours for our communications director, and for firefighters in the general fund. But most of that, if you remember, is funded with a SAFER grant. We also want to talk about the share of taxes that are paid by homeowners. Has that increased over time, or has that declined? That is increasing because of the rollback primarily. You can see that residential, since 2014, residential is paying just over half, 56%. This year, they're proposed to pay 63%, while commercial is declining from 39 to 31. The state feels, I guess, that they want commercial to be more competitive. And I'm sorry, some of these got a little bit out of order. So our valuation trends, we've talked about this at our first budget meeting. We continue to have our assessed value reach new records, but because of the rollback, the taxable portion of that is significantly lower. So our taxable is $2.34 billion on our total of over $4 billion. And we have $317 million in TIF. And this slide, we're not going to talk about numbers. I mostly want to just show you the concept that our property taxes, when you, we applied inflationary factors. If property values and taxes would have gone up at the rate of inflation since 2003, taxes would be incredibly higher. So our actual property taxes have not kept up with inflation over the last 20 years. Our budget process this year, there's been a lot of discussion. We did choose to do it a little differently this year based on feedback from the mayor and council. But we started with the capital improvements program. Then we developed our base budget using the fiscal 21 staffing and updated it for 22 contractual rates. Departments were asked to review their revenue and provide realistic revenue, and to leave their other non-personnel expenses at the FY21 approved budget amounts. And then if they had critical needs to support current services, they were provided to us separately, and we incorporated those in a later budget level. We had a budget work session February 15. And at that council meeting, we set a resolution for the maximum levy budget hearing for March 1. We held that hearing on March 1 and adopted a resolution and had a work session prior to that. We then set the resolution for the date of the regular budget hearing for today. We presented the proposed budget with options on March 15. We had another budget work session March 22. And of course, then tonight, we're having our hearing and final vote. Then I thought we would walk through a little bit of the increases this year. So for personnel, and this would be pay raises, changes in overtime, anything like that, $563,859. This is just for the general fund. Health insurance is a large increase, $1.7 million. A lot of that is reducing health insurance reserves that we have been spending down the last few years. We've spent them down to a level that we can't continue to do that, so we're having to add that to the taxes this year. Police and fire pensions increased by three, a little bit more than 3% this year, so we have an increase there. And then we're expecting a number of retirements, so our retirement payouts are increasing also. Significant non-personnel changes, we are adding some software, so there's an increase there. This is an election year, so we're adding $60,000 for elections. We are adding for our liability and property insurance. Those rates are rising partly based on a lot of the weather events we're seeing nationally, as well as other things. Our workers' compensation claims are increasing, so we are increasing that budget. And we also subsidize the cemetery, and we have funded that at the same amount since I think about the year 2000, and they're requesting another $10,000 this year. Then on the revenue side of things, well, I'm sorry, we're still on expenses. Ambulance expenses are rising, $767,000, and that's to support a new program which is earning us more revenue, but there are expenses that accompany it. Police expenses are increasing, $615,000. A lot of that is due to the new camera, taser, body camera equipment that was approved by council a few weeks ago. And other expense changes are actually a reduction of $190,000. So we have net non-personnel changes of $1.5 million. And revenue, we have increased ambulance revenue of $1.35 million, planning revenue of $193,000, and I believe that's for sale of property. Increased police revenue, and this is an increase in ATE camera revenue. And you may remember that in prior years, when we started the ATE cameras, we were collecting the revenue and holding it, using it, it ends up being the budget two years down the road because that's the budget we're setting. You don't know the revenue until for the second year down the road. This year, they have asked to use another $407,000 to fund, again, the equipment that we discussed earlier, the body cameras and all of that. And we also had collected a higher amount that, following the old resolution, would be released to the budget this year. And as I think you all know, there is, of course, another bill in the state legislature to ban those cameras that will hopefully not be implemented. So the total revenue that we are incorporating into the operating budget this year from cameras is about $920,000. That would be a significant issue for us should that bill become law. We reduced our clerk finance revenue, and that's from a variety of sources. Gaming revenue, we're reducing, and that's pandemic-related. Interest revenue is being reduced because interest rates have just plummeted to zero with the pandemic, and a few other small things. We are proposing using the state relief COVID money that we received, and that was awarded to us. We could use a safe harbor, they called it, of a certain percentage of public safety salaries to receive that. That's what we did. And so we received $1.6 million for that. And then other miscellaneous types of revenue, fees, grants, things like that, were $231,000. For total revenue increases of $3.8 million. So all those three things net to an increase in general fund property taxes of 300, just under $381,000 is all for the year. But we also need to increase our debt service levy. That's increasing by $386,000. And then there's a small increase for each of the special levies, the grout and the library. So our total net increase in property taxes from fiscal 21 is $772,818. And interestingly, that is below the 2% that requires the maximum budget levy hearing to require a supermajority vote. Tonight does not require a supermajority, but it's just interesting that we were able to bring it down below that. Other factors that will affect future budgets that we need to keep in mind, fiscal 23 is coming. We will have a 27 pay periods that year. So the general fund portion of that extra payroll, and one payroll is about $1.66 million projected to be. And what we have tried to do in the past, and this only happens about once every 12 years, but we try to set aside some money for that every, a few years prior to that, because the last thing we want to do is come to you in fiscal 23 and have to add that $1.66 million all at once. I was able to set aside a small amount in fiscal 20. I try to do that based on just revenue exceeding expenses for the year because our departments generally do a really good job managing their money, and hopefully we will be able to continue to do that. Then even aside from the 27th pay period, our estimated personnel increases for fiscal 23, and I used a very conservative 2% raise estimate, will be at $1.4 million. And we'll also need to make up that use of the state COVID money we received, to $1.6 million. So we're probably looking at substantial cost increases again for fiscal 23, and we'll all have to get creative again about how we're going to fund those. We talked about this just on Monday a little bit at the work session. I put it in here. I won't talk about it too much, but it's, we set aside a portion of fund balance to use each, we have been doing it quite a bit every year for fiscal 21. We budgeted $750,000. We did that again for fiscal 22. And this chart just shows you how much we budgeted to use versus how much we actually, how much it actually rose or fell. And you can see it, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. Fiscal 17 and 18, we actually used more than we projected to, but 19, 20, and 21, we used less than were projected. So hopefully, well, we don't know about 21 yet. I shouldn't say that. I'm hoping we do. And it might look like we do just because of the state COVID grant money that we'll receive. That's helping to fill a hole there. We also know that future debt service is probably rising. We have a lot of needs, and we have some very large projects that we're working on right now. Things, we know we're doing projects at the convention center this year. We know we're building quite a few roads, and we've got two large bridges. We did, we were fortunate to get a grant to pay half of the bridges, but we do have to fund the other half. So that's just another factor to know going forward. Then I threw some slides in here, which I will talk through really quickly. I always feel bad. Our other funds kind of get left out in the budget discussions because they're fairly self-supporting. The sewer fund is self-sustaining. We do, as you remember, we've talked about, we want to be on a program of 5% fee increases a year because we're borrowing money to meet the improvements required by the consent decree. So we will have that, but we'll spend a total of about $33 million, I believe, this shows 31, I think, on the sewer program. Stormwater fees, again, this is self-sustaining in that we are going to be able to start spending a large amount for improvements. 1.25 only for operations and maintenance, another, less than 400 for street sweeping. Garbage fees, if you remember, we had a huge change in that, activities of that fund starting last January, January of 2020. So our garbage and yard waste recycling operations are more, a little more expensive because we were able to double the number of times that recycling is picked up curbside at people's homes. So that total cost of that is $4.8 million. We will spend about a quarter, well, $290,000 on equipment for a new garbage truck and a vehicle, another vehicle. Animal control is about less than $400,000, and code enforcement activity is about $600,000. Road use fund is another important fund for us. We received, if you remember, a couple years ago, $28 million from the state because we took over the ownership of University Avenue. Prior to that, it was a state-owned highway. So we are, as you all know, if you drive there, we are under major construction with that. That will, should be wrapping up, I think, in fiscal 22. So we still have some large construction going on in fiscal 22 from using that transfer of jurisdiction funds. Most of the rest of the road use fund is used for operations and staffing, for street maintenance, snow removal, traffic lights, engineering activities, things like that. Our local option fund, as you know, is restricted all for street construction, and we will spend about $8.6 million on construction activities in fiscal 22, and about a million on unimproved street repair. And the engineering fund is also funded out of there for some of the supervision they provide for that construction. We also have federal funds received in the block grant fund. Most of that is spent for housing rehab and construction, about $3.6 million. Administration will be about $800,000. We also have a housing fund that's strictly federal housing dollars, which we refer to as the Housing Authority. We provide housing assistance to residents who qualify of $5 million a year. We do that. Administration is about $800,000 a year. And then we also support the Ridgeway Towers senior public housing at $334,000. And again, this is all completely done with federal funds. Capital projects, we have a large budget, and generally, people budget generously with these because sometimes projects end up taking a couple of years. But the total budget for this is quite large. You can see the variety there. There's about $2.6 million from TIF district. We're projecting to spend $16 million from bond funds, 4.7 from grants, just many different things. The airport should have some large grants that complete construction this year, too. And I think that is everything that I wanted to talk about. I'm always, either Mayor Hart or I are always happy to entertain questions about the budget. And I do want to give a special thank you to the mayor, all the city council, certainly my finance department staff, and all the city departments, because the budget is not done by any one person. It is a big process that takes all of our departments to come together and develop their costs and revenues and what we're going to be able to do in a year. So I want to thank everybody for that, and we'll turn it over for questions.
All right. Michelle, really quickly, of the three point, what was our proposed tax rate? How much of that, again, is based upon the state changes?
Right. So our increase is 3.49%, but 2.42% of that is because of the state changing, the rollback factor in forcing residential properties as a group to pay more of the bill and less for commercial properties.
And then do we have any control on that?
Unfortunately, we have no control over that. The state makes those decisions, and we just have to apply it.
All right. Kelly, I think at this time, we had the presentation. I think we need to close and open the hearing so people can come with questions, correct?
If we open the public hearing, then we can move to comments.
Okay. All right. Ms. Jewett?
What? Do you want me to do the public hearing?
Yes.
I couldn't hear what Kelly said. I'm sorry.
Yep. We're on number one.
As soon as I can find it. Motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget.
No.
I'm sorry. Receive and file proof of the publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 budget.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The hearing is now open. I believe that we have some registered speakers and some comments as well. So, Mrs. Clerk, could we have those first things first?
All righty. Okay. I will start out by reading some public comment.
Can you all hear?
No.
You got you got to speak directly into it.
All right. I'll start out by reading some public comment that we received. First is from Bill Kaymeyer. Says, "Good evening, council. I am not able to attend tonight as I am still being careful with COVID. I am watching on TV, however. I am very concerned with this budget for many reasons, but most of all, because of the enormous expense being requested by the mayor for a chief of staff. In all my years in Waterloo, I have never seen such an absurd budget request. We pay the mayor a great salary and just gave him a raise. At a time when taxes in Waterloo are again going up and many are suffering due to the pandemic, I find it insulting for council to approve such a request. To me, this position is saying that the mayor needs help with his job. I appreciate the honesty, but putting additional expense on the taxpayers is not the answer. I ask you to search your hearts tonight and really think before doing this. Approving such a frivolous expense is a slap in the face to every city department that has requested and been denied additional staff and more importantly, a slap in the face to the taxpayers who will foot the bill. I am no longer concerned for myself, rather for my children and grandchildren. The bright young minds of Waterloo have little incentive to stay in the city when taxes go up year after year and all we have to show for it is a fancy assistant for the mayor. Please amend this budget and remove this position. Bill Kaymeyer, 526 Home Park Boulevard." All right. Our next comment, our next comment comes from Dorothy Wright. And she wrote, "I just wanted to voice my concern about hiring an executive assistant for the mayor." Our next comment comes from Don Miller. He writes, "Mr. Mayor and council members, I favor retaining the Director of Administrative Services funding for only one reason. It is the nascent step that should conclude with the city adopting a council manager form of city government, also referred to as council administrator form. The information I have found places Waterloo previously in fifth place and ninth place as Iowa's most populous city. There are many reasons for this decline. However, one stands above the others, our form of city government. The eight more populated cities have one significant advantage, council manager governing structure. The significant advantage is that the elected council hires a college/university educated, work-experienced individual to manage the city's day-to-day machinery efficiently. Efficiency equals money saved and studies show council manager cities operate more efficiently. The city manager serves at the council's pleasure. The manager is responsible for presenting the council with the budget for their alteration or approval. On March 11, 2021, I contacted the city clerks in the following cities with this question. On what date was the budget presented for council consideration? The replies were: Davenport, January 16th; Ankeny, January 22nd; Des Moines, February 3rd; Cedar Rapids, February 8th; Ames, February 23rd; Waterloo, not yet. There are too many advantages to mayor/council governments to discuss here. However, I encourage our mayor and council to engage the mayors and councils of the eight cities in conference to learn their experiences, appraisals, and recommendations. The wheel has been invented. We need to attach it. Respectfully, Don Miller, 707 Quarry Road." Next, we received a petition from Jim Rice. I'll read that quick. The petition is titled, the petition is titled "Save the Griffin." The petition reads, "Every day, men and women across this nation put on a uniform, not knowing if they'll return home. In recent days, we're reminded of this again in our home state of Iowa. These men and women are proud of their jobs and the uniforms they wear. In today's council culture, many groups are trying to justify and twist things to meet their agenda. This is a prime example of where a small group of people have attacked the police department like many across the nation. The Griffin is a historical figure, not a symbol of hate. An independent study even proved this already once before. I have been wearing my Save the Griffin shirt, face mask, and decals proudly, and I have not had one negative feedback about it. The Griffin is used on many products. You can find it at stores. Are they all getting removed? And if the patch is replaced, what happens when something happens under that patch? It gets changed again? The money spent to change this could be better used within the community on education and fighting the rise in violent crimes. With an expanding city budget, there comes a time when priorities need to be set. If you must change it, then I strongly suggest eliminating the bridging the gap slogan. Just lately, the city council turned down a Dollar General bill because you feel that the look isn't what Waterloo needs. What does the slogan say to visitors? That there is a huge divide within the city? Please be leaders and listen to the people who sign this petition. If you truly think the majority want it changed, then put it to a city vote. Thank you for your time. Jim Rice, 405 East Louise Street." And the petition currently has 2,028 signatures. All right. Moving to the public comment portion, we had a couple of people sign up to speak first. The first on our list is Sheila Beal. So, Sheila, if you're in the audience, you want to come up to the podium? And then, just state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Sheila Beal. My address is 315 Gale Street, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701. I've got a couple of things that I need to bring up. First of all, I've done a little bit of research and it's showing that from 2012 to 2021, there's been a decrease of residents, 1,708. Cedar Falls has had an increase of from those years, 1,259. What I don't understand is this tax abatement that you give homeowners three to 10 years to build a new home. There are some homeowners that are not paying any property tax. They're buying their they're building their house. They're turning around and selling it within that time period, so they're never paying property tax. That is not fair to the people that are paying property tax now. And I really think there needs to be a stop to that, you know, a limit. You know, let one person say if somebody comes and wants to build a house, fine. You know, give them that abatement or whatever it's called and let them build their house. But, you know, they have to stay there. If they sell it, they don't get to do it again. There needs to be a limit on that. That would save money tax-wise. I'm not real good at budgets, but I do know that saves money. Okay. My next thing is it's in regards to the police department. Now, I understand definitely that we need to have police. But, my complaint is you have, okay, it says a detective. Well, you got your fire chief, deputy chief, commander, captains, you got one, two, and three, lieutenants, you got one and two, sergeant, you got one and two, police detective, and then the rest are police officers. Just this last New Year's Eve, I called in a complaint. I had dispatch on the phone and they could hear the fireworks and sent somebody out right away. Well, they never did anything, never wrote a ticket. Not even six hours later, the fireworks are going off again. I have an officer that lives behind me, but he works second shift, so or third, so he probably did not know what was going on. But, my point is maybe we need to have undercover vehicles of some type. That way, when they see the police coming, they will not light those fireworks off. That way, they can get wrote a ticket. If they don't pay that ticket, it increases. Every call, it should increase. I have neighbors that have animals that get really stressed and it's costing the city money. Animal control gets called out for all these dogs that take off because they're frightened. I think that's a way of saving money somehow if they could do that. Also, I mean, I love you to death, Mayor Hart. You know me. But, this chief of staff position, I don't feel there's a need for that because of the past mayors that we've had. They've never had to have a chief of staff. And especially with our growth going down, 1708, I don't feel that position is necessary. I think that's everything I wanted to bring up. The streets, they're horrible. I was told last fall that they would be redoing the curbs on Gale and pouring Gale Street, blacktopping. And they flat out lied because now I'm told by the engineer's office that no, that's not in the plans for this year. I've been waiting since I purchased my house in 1996 to have that done. That street was supposed to be done first and it was never done. This is 2000 and what, '21? Somebody needs to look at the priorities as far as, you know, the residential areas. Maynard Avenue is horrible. That is the worst street I've ever been down in I don't know how long. We really need to look at funding more with this. The sewer lines, redoing the sewer lines, the storm sewers, and the water mains. Those need to get done before we do any paving of any streets. Four years ago, they paved Hannah. They had to re-tire up brand-new concrete and put in storm sewers and water mains because they kept breaking. And there was nothing wrong with that street whatsoever. Just common sense. Don't waste taxpayers' dollars. That's basically everything I needed to state. If you have any questions, you want to ask me anything, you can call me. It's 319-290-9988. It's 315, yeah, 315 Gale, G-A-Y-L-E, Street, Waterloo, Iowa.
Our city engineer is not in here or in here, so I took note of that. And I'll talk about the position a little bit later.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Okay. Next up, we have Dave Dreyer.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I'm going to take this thing off so you can hear me. Mayor and council, you are now picking winners and losers, in my opinion. You okay a theme park out by the water park? And at that time, apparently, you weren't worried about traffic congestion. Now, with the general Dollar General wanting to go out there worried about traffic congestion. And I'm not sure, as stated in the paper, what it means about a negative perception of Dollar General means. There are numbers of other negative perceptions in the city of Waterloo, such as potholes and washboard streets that would turn somebody off coming to Waterloo. I've stated in the past, start on next year's budget, April 1st. Don't wait till the last minute like we always see. Why does everything seem to be a rush-rush situation as I've seen in the past years that I've been attending council meetings? Too many times, I've heard, oh, we have to pass this tonight. For some reason, it got put on the back burner until the last minute. Starting out with all problems, not wait for the last minute. I know we elect you to represent us, however, we did not represent you to ignore us. No one asking my opinion has ever asked my opinion, so I must assume they aren't asking anyone else's opinion. Even when we bring conversation up here, we try to give you guys a heads up on what our concerns are, and it seems to always fall on deaf ears. I send emails to all of you and I get one person that responds. That's it. And not my council representative. You'll do what you want to do without regard to our feelings. The unemployment because of the pandemic seems to not have an effect on your need to spend our money. A chief of staff position is another going to be another stress on our tax pockets. On social security incomes, we aren't keeping up with your wants. We do have state and federal money that comes in to the coffers. However, those are our money, too. We pay state and federal taxes. So, it's all our money. It's not just why lose money because Waterloo got it. So, just collected in a different pathway. Add up all the money that we owe now and what you want not need and see how bad that hits all of our pocketbooks.
Next, we have Todd Obadahl.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I'll take this off so I can be heard as well. Todd Obadahl, 124 Amity Drive. I've been coming to council meetings since early of 2017, since I moved back to the area. At that time, there was an issue regarding recycling and two trucks being sent out to take the garbage and recyclables away from the residences. But, it turned out the recyclables were going to the landfill and not getting recycled. I simply asked for the council to refund the money to the people that paid for items to be recycled. Was told again and again, no, can't do it. It's too much money. It would have been a $60,000 refund to the people for two months of service that they were defrauded out of. And the city said, no, no, that would that would hurt the departments and we have to we have to make sure that maintain that $60,000. We took it from the people. We didn't do with it what we told them we were going to do with it, and that's tough on them. Since I started coming to these meetings, I've seen at the top here the goals for the city of Waterloo. And it says, "Reduce the city's property tax levies through responsible balance of cost reduction in city operations." Every year at budget time since I've been here, the tax rates have gone up every single time. And every single year, it says, "Next year, we'll do it differently. Next year, we'll start earlier." It doesn't happen. Here we are again, 2021. The same thing is happening again. You know, one thing was it was compared during the presentation by our CFO that our tax levies are we're below the rate of inflation. Well, the tax levies should are kind of tied to property values. And those property values, as they appreciate with the cost of living, and if we're if we're running even with with inflation, there shouldn't be any need for increase in tax levies. But, our properties in Waterloo are not appreciating at the same rate as our neighbors. And part of that is because of the disparate tax levels that we have. So, we are we are going through a death spiral on this. When we are in a situation where we are in a budget crisis and we need to raise taxes, 8% is getting thrown out tonight, which again, is on tax increases for every year going back as far as I can remember. And this accumulates, we say, well, it's just a little bit of an increase. It's just another $36. Well, $36 on $36 on $36. But, 20 years ago, we didn't have a we didn't have a surcharge franchise fee for utilities. So, this year, when somebody's $100 utility bill went up to $200 during the cold February, they got to pay an additional $10 to the city as a tax. But, we don't count that as a tax, but it's a tax. That wasn't there before. That wasn't there before. For the privilege of living in Waterloo, I got to pay an additional 5% on my utility bill. That wasn't there before. That's not pointed out here. On the budget, we have the hot topic item about the griffon. And it's pretty clear to me, and it's pretty clear to, I think, all observers I've spoken to, what the public wants on this. And it's very clear, the public does not want to get rid of the griffon, but there are people here that think it's just a good idea and it doesn't matter what their constituents think. I remember July 13, 1981, very clearly, that morning we woke up and found out we had two police officers that were shot and killed in the line of duty the night before. That changed this city. Anybody that's my age or older remembers that day. I've gotten to know, to a certain degree, some of the children of those officers, and I've gotten to know people that responded on the scene that night, that lended aid to the fallen officers unsuccessfully. This is something that I remember. There's not somebody that's my age that doesn't remember 1027 Franklin Street as an address. Right now, there's nothing at 1027 Franklin Street. It's like it never happened. Those men died wearing the griffon emblem. It is a symbol of pride. The people that went to give aid to those fallen police officers aided those officers wearing the griffon emblem. There is not a single person that supports keeping the griffon that doesn't support the police. There's not a single person that doesn't mourn the loss of those officers. There's not a single person that isn't grateful and give thanks to our Creator that Waterloo hasn't had any police officers fall in the line of duty since then, in an active line of duty. But we put that on the budget to change the griffon. In a budget crisis situation, we are going to raise taxes to eliminate that griffon that the public doesn't want to eliminate. All I can say is that for those of you who maybe weren't in Waterloo at that time, maybe weren't born at that time, and think that you know better about what to do with the griffon and what to do with the taxes, just stand up loud and proud and say, city of Waterloo, I want to get rid of the griffon, and I want to raise your taxes to do it. Let's see how that goes. Thank you.
That's it for my list.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council and mayor and staff? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you get a few minutes. So please come... Let me put my glasses... Come on. So step up, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me through this mask or not, can you? Okay, I'll take it off then. My name is Becky DeCrye. I live here in Waterloo, 2616 Gloria. I just had a couple of quick things to say. I agree with the gentleman that was just up here. We have enough problems with our budget. You don't need to waste money on changing the griffon when there are so many people, I would guess the majority, if you put it up to a vote, a vast majority, that don't want it changed. They surely should not have to have their taxes used for that when there are so many more viable things that it could be used for. Secondly, I don't think we need an executive assistant or whatever the name of the position is for the mayor. The past mayors with more population have gotten along just fine without that, and I believe the mayor can find a way to do the job without having additional taxes used for that purpose. That's all my comments. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Carol Griffin Gustafson, and I live at 209 Forest Avenue in Waterloo. A couple of things that I would like to address is, as was stated before, I also do not agree that we need to change the griffon. I think no matter what you put on a police car, what emblem you put on a police car, it's still a police car. It still serves at the will of the people in this community. It's a scary thing when it pulls you over to the side of the road, or if it comes to your house, lights flashing, but I bet you, you are happy to see it if you have a crisis in your home or you need help. So I really think that we need to think long and hard to spend so much money just to change that logo. And again, I also feel like if it was put up to a vote in the community, it would not be supported. As far as the chief of staff is concerned, I do not know of having a job description available for people to look at. I think all of us would be a lot more able to give support if we could see a job description. What exactly is this person going to be doing? Is it something new and different that, and that's why we need it? Is this going to be a go-between the mayor and all of the department heads? So, you know, it would help tremendously if we could get job descriptions so that we could better understand exactly what the role of this person would be. And the biggest thing for me is, I've heard the figure of $167,000 pay, and I'm like, what exactly are we getting for $167,000? Do we need to pay that much to get someone who is going to be a chief of staff? So again, I think several other people had mentioned, let's talk to the other major cities around the state and find out those that do have a chief of staff. Number one, what kind of a job description did they have? Number two, how did that person function? And lastly, how did they set the amount that they were going to pay that person in retrospect to the other people in the community? Because certainly, I don't know for sure, but I think that maybe our governor doesn't get paid $167,000 a year, but I could be wrong. One of the things that, as Michelle was making her presentation, that kind of tweaked my ear, being a social worker, I was like, why no support for met transit? I saw it in the paper. And I'm like, you know, met transit is one of the biggest things that our community provides to the working poor and to the elderly to get around. Working in the schools, I saw moms with little kids trying to take their families to doctor's appointments, out to Walmart to shop, whatever. And if they don't have that access to met transit at a reasonable cost, then it's going to be a definite negative impact into what's going on with our working poor and elderly. Same thing, I wonder, why are we increasing ambulance rates? Why are we expecting to have this windfall of revenue from ambulance increases? Again, where does that revenue come from now? I would assume most of it is being reimbursed through Medicare or Medicaid, but if people are self-paying, then again, you know, we're hitting the working poor, the elderly, the people that are more likely to be calling to get help from an ambulance. I think that's all I had, so thank you so much for letting me speak, and I thank you all for your work and the service that you provide to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Just really quickly, with the revenues with the ambulance, that is, the state has created this process called GEMT, and that disbursement is not that our fire department is raising rates on people, it is the new process they have for GEMT. So we pay a portion to the state and we get a portion back, so they're not raising rates on citizens. Yes, sir.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I have been to many budget meetings. I have been to a lot of department budget meetings for years, 15 to 20 years I've been going to those. I know less today than I have known in any of the past 20 years. It has been not broadcast, not advertised, or anything. I have no idea what the departments asked for, or what they got, or will get. I do know that no matter what I say or what I do, you folks have already got your mind made up. You are listening, I agree, you listen. I get callbacks from almost all of the city council people that I contact and the mayor's office, but you don't really hear the pleas of the people. This year, we should not be raising anything. We should be finding smarter ways of doing our job and completing our job. There are ways. There's equipment we could put off buying. You know, the police department, when they want more people, they get the government to hire them for the first couple of years, and then we keep them. The fire department just got four more people, they'll keep them. I've watched it for over 20 years. It's the same story. All the pie charts and everything you put up here tonight, if I had them from 15 years ago, they're almost identical. Taxes, in your statement on the front, it says, it's your goal to lower taxes. We don't do it by doing business the same way. We are proposing buying property up and down university to tear it down and give it away. The Hy-Vee people will be more than happy to sell it to you for their list price if they don't decide to give them more than their list price. That's what they'll do. They'll tear it down, taxpayers will pay for it, it'll be off the tax rolls the minute we buy it, and if it takes us 30 years to give it away, or incentivize it to give it away, that's what it'll be. We've got the Johnstone Building downtown. I had a letter read at one of the council meetings, five years we've sat on that building, five years we've lost all the taxes. We do this with buildings all over Waterloo. We continue to buy, spend money. If that were my wife out buying and spending money, I would have to leave her. I couldn't afford her. I can't afford what this city is doing to us. I've got renters, I have not raised their rent in 10 years. I know they are struggling. You folks don't do the same thing I do. You don't hold the line. You don't find smarter ways of doing it. You just say, well, we'll raise a fee. I've had my fees raised 500%, and that fee that was raised 500% generated you folks a lot of money. Did I see any of it returned in inspections? Absolutely not. You folks just keep bleeding us and bleeding us. We will be like dead sheep laying at the door if you just keep doing this. The forestry department is going to hold off hiring one person. When they were going to cut down the dead trees out here, they hired several people and a manager in the office. Have they got rid of those? I've heard nothing about it if they did, but they're going to hold off hiring one. We're about through with that project of taking down those emerald ashbore trees, those ash trees. It just gets to me, you know? I haven't got a lot of years left on this earth, but I would like to keep some of my money rather than give it all to you folks. You folks want to hire this new person in the mayor's office. The mayor's office continues to cost us more every year, more travel money, more raises, a part-time person, and now on someone else to help. When are you going to think of us? You should, the top should set the example for the rest of us. I think you folks could do a lot better than this. I think you could hold the line, work smarter, not harder, like John Deere people do. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Please come up. State your name and address for the record. We'd love to hear your comments, so don't be afraid. Come on up, we're here to listen.
Hello, I'm Dawn Henry, 2121 West 7th Street, Waterloo, Ward 4. Just a couple of things to say. First off, I'm disappointed, embarrassed by the city council that it can't come together before Monday night to have a work meeting to discuss the budget, and then 72 hours later, you want to pass it. You have not given the community an opportunity to even view, other than what's in last night's Courier, as to what's even going on in this city, and I think that's really sad. I think there should have been some type of budget put out in the Courier, online, something for people to see, and I'm just disappointed. Second, yeah, and I wish that the budget line items could have been published. Again, just, I think that would have been very important. Next, I would vote no to a chief of staff. I also see something up there whipping through those slides about a .8 FTE communications person. I don't know what any job descriptions or titles any of those people would have. I don't know what they're going to be paid, though I've heard $176,000 for a chief of staff. Mayor, that's more than you make. I'd want to know why we need them, what is the need? I'd like to see more money spent on the streets. I spend a lot of time on Ridgeway, and believe me, that street has earned its name of Ridgeway. Every 10 feet, it's a bump. It's full of potholes, it's a mess. I don't know what year you plan on fixing it, if everything's on a 20-year plan or some line like that, it doesn't matter when the streets are a mess. Also, what last, near and dearest to my heart is the griffon. I did not see any amount of money in the budget for that. Is that in the budget for this year? I don't know. At last, I'd heard it was going to be $200,000 or something like that, which I think is just horrendous. I think we could spend a lot more time with some education and community work to have many people understand, a few people perhaps, or many, understand what the griffon really is, because the police department is very important to this city. If we're not safe, they're not going to stay here. And as I said before, I feel safe when I see that griffon go down my street because I know that my area is being watched, and I can feel safe. And last, just I want to say, I know you've worked especially hard tonight, Mr. in the green shirt, but this meeting is very difficult to hear. You are all down here, I am hearing impaired, I know there's many people behind me that are struggling to hear. We can't hear you, we can't see the speaker, so you're sitting there wondering what is really being said, and this was maybe not the greatest idea for a setup. I don't know what's wrong with city council chambers, that would have been a lot nicer. I just think it's been a disservice to the people that are here this evening to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I'm Jim Moss, 113 Lickde Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time tonight. I've heard a lot of things here tonight, haven't gone to a lot of council meetings, but I got baptized on this one. What I would like to say, or ask, I guess, a nice lady came up here and asked if we have a job description for the chief of staff, and then are we going to have a new job description for the mayor of Waterloo? I would like to see, if this goes past the council, approved by the council, I would like to see maybe that right away, and also to promote the city of Waterloo. I get sick and tired of reading in the paper, like I have the last three days or whatever in the Courier, all the ratings, you know, that they have for all of the cities in Waterloo. And Waterloo, in some cases, not so bad, in other cases, really kind of bad. I think that the mayor of Waterloo really should be promoting the city of Waterloo, and I'm hoping that that's the whole point of this chief of staff. I understand the money, you know, it has to be in the budget, and it's going to either be an increase or it's going to be taken away from somebody else. And that's really what I would like to see, is some more positive things that go on with the council and also with the mayor of Waterloo being out there. And the other thing that I'd like to say about the police department and the griffon, my bottom line is... my bottom line is, no Griffin, or if we stay with the Griffin, I got your six. Thank you.
Dawn Henry again. I'm sorry, I would like to go back.
We need to let other folks.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We need to allow the other folks that haven't had an opportunity to speak.
Jim Drouity, 843 West Airline Highway, Waterloo, Iowa. Mr. Mayor, council people, thank you for letting me speak. I believe that it's a waste of money for changing the Griffin. I served with that Griffin for ten years as a reserve officer from Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm not, with all the conflicts of arrest, or doing a traffic stop, or just helping a person change their tire, I don't ever remember them coming up and saying that that Griffin is very offensive. So I don't know what you see there, I believe, save the Griffin. Your assistant job for you, Mr. Mayor, I don't understand that, unless you yourself, your position's going to go part-time. Maybe you could work for $10, or excuse me, $2 a year, like I did for ten years. Some of the things that we could possibly help fund Waterloo a little bit better might be more cameras. I know the officers don't have time to make traffic stops or help the citizens of Waterloo too often anymore because they're busy with other calls. Ladies spoke earlier with the fireworks call. I believe that's a number-one call anymore, and they don't have time to do it. So my suggestion is to have more speed cameras out there, more red light violation cameras. I don't know how much that brings in for revenue, it'd be nice to know. And I believe, like the other people have said, we need more positive out of Waterloo instead of negative of raising taxes. Thank you.
Good evening, Josh Wilson, 100 East Second Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa. And that second part is because of the taxes in Waterloo. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm thirty-two years old, and you don't often hear from young people in the community. I tried to be a voice for young people when I lived here. I moved to Des Moines, worked for the state government, which gets an awful lot of a bad rep when it comes time for the budget in Waterloo. Yet, the state's budget is balanced, so I find that ironic. I then moved to Washington, DC, the swamp, and I moved back here. And I had a decision to make, Waterloo, my hometown, or Cedar Falls? It was a difficult one, but since the majority of my family was also fleeing Waterloo because of the taxes, most recently my eighty-three-year-old grandfather, I made the decision to move to Cedar Falls. And in Cedar Falls, we see a lot of things for the money that we give them. We see a lot of really nice things. And that's why a lot of younger people, and people in general, are moving there. I went through my high school yearbook from West High School, and I graduated with four hundred students, rounding that. Very few of them are in Waterloo still, and I find that sad. I would say that there's a lot probably wrong with the budget. Admittedly, I haven't read the entire thing, I've only seen what's been in the press. But there are some silly things in the budget. Coming from Washington, DC, serving in the House of Representatives on a congressional staff, the majority of the chief of staffs in Washington are not making what's being proposed tonight. The chief of staff that I served under in Des Moines when I worked for the governor did not make much more than the chief of staff position that's being proposed here in Waterloo. If I would have known the salary in Waterloo would be so good, I wouldn't have pursued my political career in Des Moines or Washington, DC. In fact, I texted the mayor recently, haven't responded yet, but the offer still stands. I'll do it for ninety, maybe even eighty-five thousand, since we're friends. But I think it's ridiculous, quite frankly, and looking across the state of Iowa, you'll see many cities have moved to a part-time mayor and a city administrator. There are many things we could spend that money on in town. For example, we have a new cost to cover with the Griffin here. If we've got the money for the chief of staff, let's use that to pay for the Griffin. We don't need two costs for that. You know, my mom was a schoolteacher, I know some of you are schoolteachers or in education. I think I even saw a couple of teachers in here tonight. Man, you could hire a lot of teachers with that salary. Could hire a lot of employees for that salary. And I find it to be comical that we'd be proposing that here. So in closing, I came down here for one reason really only, and that was I couldn't hear anything on TV. I also think it's time that the council returns to its chambers and starts to meet in front of the people. We can do it safely now, pretty much both sides of the political aisle are starting to come to that conclusion. So there shouldn't be too much debate over that with all the vaccinations that are out there. So I guess I would just tell you, as a young person, I love this town, I really do. I've spent a lot of time here, I know a lot of people here still. They're all quite a bit older than me, no offense, Forrest. But if we're going to attract young people, and if people like me are ever going to move back to this town, and if people are going to live here to pay the enormous taxes to keep the city functioning, you guys better start doing something different. Because I'm only thirty-two, and nothing's changed. Forrest is, what are you, Forrest Sixty? You know, he's older, I'll just say that. And nothing's changed in his time, when will it change? When will it change? You guys are in charge, we elect you to do this important job. I know a lot of you, and I know that you can do better than this. Thank you.
Motion to close hearing and receive and file comments. Oh, I'm sorry, is there somebody else?
She already spoke. You've already spoken, and on the rules and procedures, we allow someone. And then, we didn't even do timing tonight. We let people talk as long as they, I'm sorry. You get to speak one time this evening, and I didn't even do time limits. Everyone got to speak. I said, the rules of procedure for the meeting state that you can speak one time. And since this was budgeted and we hadn't met in a while, I didn't even do the time limits. So at this point, since no one else stepped up, Mrs. Jewen had moved for oral comments to be closed, and we have a second. So a motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oral comments closed.
Move a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022 budget with a total tax levy rate of eight, I'm sorry, and property tax asking in the amount of property tax asking in the amount of $44,640,549.
A motion has been made with the second. Council comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Sorry. At this time, I do not wish to belabor the point. I wish to make a motion to amend this resolution. And the amendment is that I introduce a resolution approving the fiscal year ending 2022 budget with a total tax levy rate of 18.65409 in property tax asking in the amount of $44,693,610. I make that motion to amend in that regard.
Second.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I plan I will pass this around, it's a little crib sheet. And Mr. Mayor and council, what I want to do is just briefly go over, if I'll be, if you'll allow me to. And these are changes that were made to the five-page document that we all received, entitled, "The General Fund Staff Request", with changes as of March 15, 2021. And I'm working off everything above that and the pages before that amount that is at 18.91507 tax rate. Okay, and the changes, first of all, are the mayor department activity, 8200, is to make an additional cut to that of $211,000, with $176,000 coming from lines 1111 through 1131, and another $35,000 from line 1390. Next is to finance, and I add in an additional $150,000 from the COVID-19 American Rescue Act funds to a total of $1,750,000 from the $1,600,000. And I know that in doing that, there are, and have been questions regarding, how can you do that? The funds aren't even here yet. Well, I have taken the effort to find out exactly how this money is going to be dispersed. There aren't guidelines, and I have talked to our great, in my opinion, Chief Financial Officer regarding the latest that she has on it. But I did receive a piece of paper, or a document, that basically talks about the use of funds. And in it, it says, "The funds can be used for COVID costs, economic recovery, loss of revenue, premium pay for essential workers or infrastructure, but cannot be deposited in pension funds. In addition, state funds cannot be used to offset lower taxes through either law or administrative action." So this is an amount of money that totals coming to Waterloo in the next two years of $31.4 million in the Rescue Act relief monies. And even as told to us the other, within the last week or so, in one of our meetings, $1.8 million of homelessness money is also coming Waterloo's way. The first allotment, I believe, should be received sometime within the next forty-five days or thereabouts, because it was sixty days out from the date of passage of this. So by me adding this $150 million to the COVID relief money, people might say, "Well, that's money that you can't count on." Okay, I understand that, but it's money that is available for the next two years. And what we are hoping is the losses that have occurred in revenue to our city will be coming back to us in those two years, so that this is not going to be necessary anymore. And for those that want a positive outlook, I just gave you one. Because I really do believe that when all the mask-wearing, social distancing is over, and we can get back to some semblance of a new normal, that we are going to see more revenues come into the city because there's going to be much more activity. So that is why, and that's justification for putting that there. Now, I could have, in my nice little lefty liberal way, I could have said, "Well, you know, why don't we put in $500,000?" No, I limited it to an amount that I believe was reasonable to do the things that should be done. The next thing under finance is I added $50,000 more to revenue from the general fund balance for a total of $800,000 from the general fund balance. With police, I moved the uniforms over that money that's allotted to that over to the capital improvement project or program budget. I then cut the police department from their total budget, $94,500, and from the fire, $89,000 from their total budget. And I don't believe that either of those numbers are unreasonable. Next, in the garage, I added back in the mechanic, which we would lose for a whole year. And quite frankly, I believe that a mechanic position is a public safety position. Mechanics, we lose a mechanic, what happens with cars, with vehicles, with equipment not being taken care of? Our police force, our fire department, our staff, all of those rely on workable machinery and vehicles. Taking that away for a year, by that means only a year from now, we're going to be sitting here, and that position will be eliminated. And I can't see that happen. And that's why I put that back in here. As far as the forestry worker, which was addressed by one of our good speakers, I would delete that delay in hiring. So my summary is, there are cuts of $211,000 to the mayor, $94,500 for police, $78,000 in uniforms moved to CIP, $89,000 removed from fire. And then there are $48,608 that are applied to road use tax or local option sales tax for a total cut of, in cuts, from $521,548. And then the revenue additions, $150,000 more from the expected use of the American Rescue Act funds, $50,000 from the fund balance for a total of $200,000. So with the cuts in revenue additions, that's $721,548. And if you go down to the bottom, what you're going to see is revenue and cuts minus the putbacks is $610,000. And what we will end up is a tax rate adjustment down from that 18.91 to 18.65. And what is so important here is this new, and what I'm proposing here, does not eliminate, it does not have any delay hires in it. It keeps our staff the way that our staff is right now. And it does not add any kind of chief of staff position. To me, that just makes absolutely, that's a case for hypocrisy when we have in our budget eliminating a position, having delay hires in positions which do public service for the people of Waterloo, but then turning around and adding a staff member to our budget. So that is an explanation of what I have proposed here in my amendment. And I'm open to any questions, comments from anybody.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm taking this off just because it's important to be heard, and I'm distanced. I seconded my colleague for one reason. I think on tonight of all nights, we should not use parliamentary I think on tonight of all nights, we should not use parliamentary procedures to prevent one of us from talking. I applaud my colleague for doing all the work to put this together. However, I gotta, I have to tell him I cannot support this, because I fundamentally do not believe that we stand in place of our administrators, and when they say they can put up with the delay in hiring, or they want to look at another position for a lot longer to determine if we need it, I'm going to trust their opinion on that. I totally agree with my colleague about the chief of staff position, but I would do it a little different. I would take the money that I know is going to be approved tonight for that position, and I would put it in a fund to take down derelict houses in the city of Waterloo, some of which have been up for 10 years, and inflicting an eyesore on their neighbors that long. I would do that. Again, I applaud my colleague for going to all this work. I think he came in at a great rate. It's just that I can't quite go along with some of the details. And that's my opinion.
All right. Mr. Bozen.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I just had a question from Mr. Morrissey, and I would like him to just explain where he identified the 94,500 that's coming out of the police department's budget and the 89,000 that's coming out of the fire. I don't know what else to tell you.
You gotta, you gotta speak directly into the mic.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go. I would like Mr. Morrissey to, if he could identify where he came up with the 94,500 cuts in the police department, what he proposes we cut, and what he proposes we cut to gain the 89,000 from the fire department. Thank you.
If you, if you want to.
Sure, I would be happy to answer that. Having done this, this is my eighth time going through this, what I have, what I have heard in the past from different departments outside of, well, even including the fire department, or quite frankly, any department, especially the lower departments who really don't have the same kind of budgets that police and fire do, is that we will work within the budget that is given to us. So I believe that the fire and police departments have great administrative staff and will be able to work with the budget that this proposes they be given.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Morrissey? We have a motion and a second for Mr. Morrissey's amendment to the levy rate. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Foise?
No.
Mr. Greider?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
All right. Is it, yeah, I had a couple of things that I'd like to say. So that fails. I had a couple of things that I'd like to say, but I was interested in taking.
I mean, if we can't hear your.
I said, "I have, I have a few things."
Take the mask off.
I have a few things that I want to say, but I want to open it up to our dear council members to talk first, and then I'd like to have some comments as well. So council members, we have the original motion that was placed on the agenda. Would you like to have some more comments from those that have not spoken on this? I admit.
Yeah.
Mr. Bozen?
Thank you, sir. I have, I have a few questions, and I just wanted to point out, when Mrs. Wedener made her presentation, and we looked at those other cities and their, and their rates per capita, what was, what was not addressed today is that some of those cities continue to use local option sales tax as part of their property tax relief. And the citizens in Waterloo keep coming back to us when we even suggest using a portion of our local option sales tax for property tax relief, that they want their roads continued to be fixed. So I just wanted to make that point out there. I did have a question on the 3.49% does not require a supermajority, sir?
No.
No.
Can you explain that, Michelle? Because I thought anything over 2%.
Actually, that rule only applies to that first maximum levy budget hearing.
Okay.
That hearing, you have to have a supermajority if the tax increase is going to be, collections are going to be more than 2%. And that, that is not the same thing as a residential property tax increase.
Okay.
So what's interesting in where we have arrived at this evening, our actual total property tax collections are only rising by 1.76%. So even if that rule applied, it wouldn't apply to this budget, but it, it does not apply to this hearing at all.
Very good. Another question I had from Mrs. Wedener is, where is our utility franchise fees in this budget?
They're.
Do we receive them? Because I don't see it anywhere in this budget.
It's in the clerk office revenue, yes, at 4%.
Okay. Can you address how much that is?
It's just south of $4 million, about 3.7, I want to say.
So is it, is it listed as utility franchise or just clerk?
No, it's just in the revenue cell in the, on the clerk row.
Okay.
I can tell you which one that is in a minute.
That would be good, because I was, I was searching for it and couldn't find it.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, it's just part of a much larger number, but it's included on page three, row 107, the proposed revenues for this year. And that, that includes a number of things, gaming, cable franchise fee that we received from MediaCom, but that's, that 5.9 million would include that utility franchise fee.
Very good. And yeah, I was, I was just, I kept looking through it, couldn't find it, and didn't know where it was buried.
It does, doesn't have its own row.
And I did want to make a comment, when, when people compare us, compare us to Cedar Falls and how well they're doing. One thing, we have a lot of TIF, and Michelle pointed out, just how much, and how many millions we have, have buried in TIF right now. But, you know, Cedar Falls started their TIFs 20 years before we did, and they retired a number of TIFs. And their TIFs are continuing to, to put money back into their general fund, and, and each and every year, that, that, that's a lot of money based on, on their retired TIFs, and we have a large number. I've, was it 700 million over that in TIF?
317.
Okay, that's, that's, that's still a lot of taxable valuation that's buried in TIF right now. So people need to be aware of that, that, that we're, you can compare us to these other cities that use local option sales tax money for their, for property tax relief, other cities that got ahead of us on the curve on, on starting their own TIF districts and retiring TIF now. So we're, we're in a rough spot. Can, can you tell me, Michelle, when we're going to be approving the CIP?
Um.
When that comes.
I cannot. Hopefully very soon. We have to have the attorney's draft, well, the bond sale hearings, attorneys have to draft the language. If you want to have another work session about the CIP, we can do that when you wish.
That'd be good, because I'm concerned about the CIP. I'm concerned the fact that we're going 13.4 million in CIP this year, when we've averaged around 10. And I'm concerned with our debt levy when it starts to go up and how it's going to affect us two and three years from now. That's going to really affect the homeowners, because it's going to affect everyone's taxes if we can't stay underneath that debt levy. I mean, we're going to have to work, work really hard to keep it under 10 million in future years. Otherwise, we're going to be behind the eight ball, and we're going to be in worse shape than we are today. Thank you.
Mrs. Klein?
I think it's important, what my colleague just said about how much we borrow. We usually borrow about 10 million, we're going 13 million over this year. You may not feel it as bad this year, but you are definitely going to feel it in your pocket in two years. Because there's nowhere to go with it, except to you. I also want to speak again on the chief of staff position. Irregardless of what is explained to you tonight about this chief of staff position, and I suspect we may get an explanation, this council has not had a single work session on it. We didn't know the job, we don't know, at least I haven't been given, and I know a couple of other of my colleagues have not been given, a job description. We didn't know what the salary figure was until it came out. It's 176,616 proposed in this budget. That's a lot of money for, for hiring somebody brand-new that we haven't even had a chance to discuss. It's a shift, no matter which way you look at it. It is a shift in the way Waterloo has traditionally done their government. And I think it's a shift that should have come to you for discussion time. You should have been allowed into the chambers to hear discussions, to participate, and you've been cut out of it, but so has the council. We shouldn't have heard about this in March, and we should have way more details, because we are on the cusp of voting it in, and I suspect it's going to be approved. Before, before I finish, I have one more remark. The Griffin, they have transferred part of the cost to the Griffin into that 13 million dollars. It's going to go over and be borrowed. So you're going to pay some on your taxes, and we're going to borrow the rest.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yeah, just a few random thoughts. First of all, I have been a big proponent of a city administrator. This is not a city administrator. This is going to be something that I think is perhaps transitional into that position, and is going to be something that we're going to talk about. It has not been totally decided. I think Director of Administrative Services might probably be, and we have directors over the major parts of our city. And this is one area that we don't have that, and so this would get it in line with the reorganization that we've done with the other departments. And in talking, let me just say that I've had a lot of discussions with other cities who have city administrators or city managers, and those that do said that a good person, a good hire would save that money for the city because of the efficiencies, the knowledge, you're talking about somebody with experience. And this is nothing against a mayor. The current mayor or past mayors, the city government with 500 employees and all of the state and federal guidelines has gotten so complex, it's impossible to ask one person to understand all of it. So what we're proposing and in discussions with the mayor, there will be conversations on creating that job description, on making sure that it meets the needs of the city, but we have to get the money in the budget in order to hold that position. The other thing I would say, there were a couple of comments that I wanted to address from the audience. Someone mentioned Met Transit. In talking to a former director of staff of Met, they said that that was something that they didn't need because of CARES money that they got in. So there's a lot of other things that go into the budget that, that I understand that a lot of people don't understand and haven't been exposed to, and I appreciate that. And that's why we always appreciate getting your questions. The budget was put out several months ago, or several, as, as Michelle said, we had to have that out in order to get the highest rate approved, knowing that that's not what we were going to be going with. So the budget's been out there for people to review. I have not gotten questions on it, and I, I get frustrated in a lot of things, but one thing that I am very proud of is that our city department heads really stepped up this year and gave, they turned in their minimum budget, and then they were asked to give more, and they did. They have really supported the city, know that we're in a tough position. The fact that we're only asking for a little over 1%, keep in mind that the majority of our requests this year is thanks to the state. For us locally, our request is just a little over 1%, and that is due to some very creative approaches and to the departments that have really stepped up and, and found every way possible to save money. So to only have a 1% increase, I think is pretty impressive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jewen. Anyone else? Okay. So first, first, I want to, you know, thank all of you for being here. I want to thank all of you, Mr. Morris, did you have something?
Well, no, I'll let you finish, then I'll.
No, I'll let you go first. You're a voting member.
I was going to make a motion to amend, but I'll wait for your explanation on this.
I want to thank all of you, and I want to thank all of you that sent civil conversations to me. You know, this, this is, I, I love what I do with all of my heart, the good times, the bad times. And I don't care where I go, I will never turn my back on the city of Waterloo. And a lot of you out here have spent years in this community, giving all that you can to make this, make this place a greater place. So I want to thank you so much. Thank you so much for your passion this evening. And I want to thank all of the city department heads and staff members that are, that are here, that are watching, that are concerned about whether or not they'll have employment tomorrow. I want to thank our city staff that have stood alongside with me through the worst and most tough, difficult time in the history of this city regarding this pandemic. And I want to thank all of them so much, because you have no idea how some of them feel when it doesn't seem like there's an appropriate amount of appreciation, but they still do their jobs. And to the comment that was made a little bit earlier about talking about education, as mayor, I walked into this job, thank God, I've been blessed with a master's degree, eight years on council, worked with several different mayors prior to getting here. And now, that doesn't make me know it all, right? But one of the things that I decided to do was study city operations, and we took a look at, how can we take a look at making this place run more efficiently? And so I sat down with HR directors, Mrs. Felkley and myself, and we sat down with HR directors, and we took a look at the complete organizational structure of the city of Waterloo. At the time in which I started, the former mayor wanted a, believed in a chief administrator. The one prior to that believed that we needed one. But I, I thought that we needed to take a long-range look at the way that operations are ran for the city, because I had 22 to 25, I don't even know, 26 direct reports. And so we brought in that group, and we look at, how can we consolidate departments and operate this place more efficiently, like I've heard, like I've heard it stated tonight? After that, I brought in two council members that set on completely opposite spectrums of the table to take a look at reorganization plan and how we could do things more efficiently. And if you take a look right now at the Public Works Department, we hired Randy Bennett as a division manager, and we consolidated a number of departments underneath that banner. That's created efficiencies, that's brought the communication channel to the mayor's office, to other departments, brought them together more efficiently. The next part was to take a look at the engineering and planning office. We had a building official, and then we had a plans examiner. We figured out how we can consolidate that department and then bring in building maintenance along with that, because I heard a lot of you say that there were plenty of facilities that we actually own ourselves that weren't up to date. And so we restructured that department, moved that department under planning, where they work together every day. They're able to bring things together, because it is a, a department that needed reorganization. The next department is going to be our leisure services department. And all of these departments, they were made division managers, and Mr. Hudding will be next. And then we will consolidate another department within there, so that we can increase efficiency and look at overall flow and operation. We had our police. flow and operation. We had our police department and our fire department kind of joined. And there has been an incredible outcry not to do like some neighboring cities with regards to joining those two departments. And, and I split those two apart, even at the behesting of council members to make sure we, to try to create a public safety model. And I fought against that and split those departments apart from one another. And if you take a look, our fire service is doing incredible. Our police department are having more participation from the public for solving crimes than we've had in a very long time. They're doing an incredible job trying to coalesce and do those things to create community policing. And so that leaves one department that I didn't do anything with yet, and that was the administrative or the business services, because everything within that department, from finance to HR to human rights to IT, to the clerk's office, this department touches every department in the city of Waterloo. That's a management. That is a business operation. And I didn't put anyone in there yet. And so, yeah, the word chief of staff came up, director of business operations, business services manager, division manager, that's what that is. You say you want the budget to come out a little bit earlier, we can examine that process with this person working hand in hand with our finance department to help lighten that load. We have strategic priorities that we're working towards. Right now, we're working on our 2030 vision plan. You know, how are we going to carry some of those things out? You know, there's things that come past this from lawsuits and records requests and a myriad of different things, but this is not changing up the overall operations of the city. And I thank Councilwoman Juwan, and I know these other council members doing it, for saying she was in favor of a city administrator. And if you ask Councilwoman Juwan honestly, how much a city administrator costs, she will tell you 50 to $60,000 more at least than what I'm proposing tonight. And secondly, the position may have about 173 or 176. That is 130,000. The rest are benefits and those things and insurance that goes along with this position, which will be consistent with what the other division managers are making. You know, I felt that maybe I got a little too far ahead of it, and, you know, council members, Bozen, Councilwoman Juwan, and a couple of them actually called me to figure out, you know, what was taking place instead of going to social media and misguiding people about the true intentions of what was being proposed. And I was asked, okay, let's, let's work a little bit more. Let's have some more meetings. Let's do that. And I'm like, okay, let's do it. So that pushed back. But there, this is not replacing the mayor's position, the mayor's authority, absolutely not. And if you want to really take a look at it, since taking office five years ago, and this is no detriment or nothing cast against our incredible city staff, just so you know, we had challenges with regards to a consent decree and multimillion dollars worth of challenge here. We've had challenges with trying to figure out how we're going to help put houses in neighborhoods that haven't seen any development in years. We've taken a look at blight elimination and trying to transition that and turn neighborhoods back into a place where people want to live. All across here, and if you talk 28 million dollars over the average of the last five years from restructuring in increased economic development for the city per year on average. So I'm proud of Waterloo. There are some decisions that may be made at some points that you may not understand, but I'm proud of Waterloo. Our best days are ahead of us, but that is, this is not some nilly question or something that just came up overnight. This is from careful research, studying, looking at forms of government, listening to community members. That's the approach. So that's, that's where the decisions come from. So we've had some tough times. We're going to keep pushing ahead. Not everything is rosy. Budgets aren't fun. But that is the budget that we were able to put forth, and I heard from several of, several of the people, council members, that that's what they want. We have incredible department heads and city staff that are working hard every day. So I'm appreciative of this opportunity, and I love the city that I was born and raised in and will give everything, just like a number of these people up on this roster and city council members, and just like all of you. So that concludes my comments. Is there anyone else that has something to say before we take this budget to a vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Mr. Greider?
So as one of the youngest people up here, I think a lot about what this city will look like for me, what it will look like for the students that I teach every day, and what it will look like for my two daughters. And this budget came after a truly horrific year nationally, internationally, and locally. And we have had to make lots of very tough choices. And I know that you and I have had conversations, and I had tough conversations with my other council members. And I have been skeptical of some of the things that were in here, particularly the chief of, chief of staff position, because I, unlike other council members, and obviously it's their right, I do not believe that a city admin is the way to move forward. I believe a duly elected mayor who gives voice to the views of the people is more important. But I understand there are other opinions. But what this budget does, while it is hard, and I say this as someone who pays property taxes, who bought their first home and their only home in this community that I love deeply and fundamentally, that when I talk to young people about coming back to this city in which they were born, in which they were raised, in which they have the many roots of memory and family, and why they do not come back, the conversation that I have is not about taxes. The conversation that I have is about how we have not, in the past, invested in the community, in the industries, in the ideas of a future for our community, that there are not things for them to come back to. And this budget, while not perfect, as any document created by the hands of human beings is, want to be, puts forward a plan for a Waterloo in 10 years, in 20 years, in 50 years, that is more inclusive, that respects the rights that we have heard throughout the last year about what this community can and should mean to everyone, and not just those who agree with us, and not just those who confirm the things that we have heard our entire lives, but instead embraces the very nature that our community is diverse, and that others have lived experiences, and that all of those are different, but that this city that we call home, whether from birth or more recently, should reflect that. From the images that our city employees carry, from the jobs that our city employees and elected officials do, to the vision of what this city can and should look like. So while this budget is not perfect, and no budget ever will be, I will be voting in support of this budget because it builds a better Waterloo, and it starts today. Thank you.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me talk again. The chief of staff position is one that I have been opposed ever since I heard this. But I just want to make a few comments about some of the stuff that was said. First of all, I don't think that adding 211,000 to the mayor department or administrative budget there should ever be a perhaps. We're going to take a look at it. Because once that money is there, that 176,000 plus another 50,000 that is there for something that we budgeted 50,000 for yet last year, but we still haven't done and used, to me, is irresponsible. And we need to know, if we're going to pass a budget, what that pays for. And if we have a perhaps, or it may be, or we'll, we'll decide after we've given the money for something that is a perhaps, that's not the same thing as putting money in a budget for a mechanic, that we know what they're going to do, that we know that this is how much it costs, and this is what they're going to do. Right now, if this council votes to approve this with that additional chief of staff, you're basically expanding the mayor's budget, his office budget, almost in, by two. It goes from, I believe, 300 and some thousand, 60,000, something like that, up to 500 and about 60,000. So that's why I call that that be taken, taken away. And there was a comment made that this budget has been out there for people to look at for some time. I don't think so. We, we, I believe it was March 1st, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, we did the maximum budget, which we had to have five votes in order to pass. And that had some documents, but we still had not had any contact, at least I hadn't, with any department to find out exactly what it was, what their askings were, and to ask questions of those departments. I've never had that happen, and this is my eighth budget that I'm going through. And, you know, if, if there's somebody on council who was aware of conversations with different department heads and what their budget askings were, and what they were going to have to give up, or what their wish list was, I wish I could have been included in those conversations because I was not. The idea of listening to the people out there and responding to them, I understand that we're elected to represent the people of our ward, if you're a ward person like me, that was elected from people in that ward, but also our votes affect the entire city. So it's basically a vote for the entire city. And I have not had any, any comment from anybody favorable to hiring a chief of staff when we don't even know what that chief of staff is going to do, or if it's going to affect what the mayor does. As has been said before by people from the audience, we've had mayors in the past that have done just fine. And I know we had task force that reorganized. We did Title 19 changes. We did that. But that doesn't take away from the fact that we are proposing in this budget that the mayor has submitted here, lessening the staff, less, lessening the services that are being provided to the citizens of Waterloo who deserve more than this budget is saying you're going to get. Just a couple other things, and that is the mechanic position alone. And I spoke to that before, and it got defeated on a six to one vote. That position is worth four and about one-tenth of a cent. One of the things that is sorely missing from budgets, both recent past and this one, is help to do property safety inspections. Statistics are that the rental registration, and that ordinance that was passed about six and a half years ago, raised revenue of 25 cent, or 25 dollars per year for every rental unit. In Waterloo, we have 10,000 rental units approximately. And that should raise 250,000 dollars. We have one rental inspector in the city of Waterloo, 68,000 people. And just so you know this, that rental inspector position is about 97,500. And then the rest of that money gets spread out. When I voted on that six and a half years ago, that money was to be used to pay for rental, not singular inspector, but inspectors. But it's not. Waterloo, one inspector, rental or property safety inspector. Iowa City, a town that basically is our size until we get the University of Iowa coming in and making it double our size, but it has five. Des Moines has 16. Ames has three. Ames is a town, a city that's smaller than ours. And Cedar Falls even has one inspector. Why does Waterloo have one? And from talking to that inspector, that person has 9,000, because Black Hawk County is to help out, 9,000 to take care of. That's abominable that we're not doing anything in here. But that property safety inspector, like the one we have now, is at a cost of approximately the same amount, four and a half cents. So what I'm proposing, or what I'm asking this council to look at, is to eliminate the 211,000 from the mayor's budget, and to reinvest that into that mechanic and into that property safety inspector. We can do that. We can, we can realign, reallocate. But my, my motion that I'm making at this time is I make a motion to amend this resolution by deleting the mayor budget of 211,000 dollars. And that would save the taxpayers of Waterloo almost nine cents. It would move the levy rate from the proposed 18.63188 down to 18.54192, which would increase our levy rate from what it is right now by about 10 cents versus the nearly 20 cents that the mayor's budget has before. So that is my motion to amend in that regard.
Second.
All right. That motion's been made with the second. I want to clear up some, some items on that. But council, any comments? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Klein?
I would like to speak to this, too. You know, it's, it's all well and good to sit and talk about what this position is going to do tonight. I mean, it's great, great to hear things. I've heard things I haven't heard before. It's also great to know that a couple of council people were invited in to those kinds of discussions earlier on. But that cut out more than half of this city's representation. I, I just think this is something because it is a brand new position, a brand new person, not just a reshuffling and a reorganization. It is brand spanking new, and it is being presented by a department whose head received a major raise not that long ago. So, you know, I, I think this needs to be delayed at least a year so that the city can take a look at it and the citizens... take a look at it and the citizens can take a look at it with the full council, not just a couple of cherry picked people.
So, so two quick things. One, I guess the, the mayor is the only person, or these council members outside of our dear councilwoman, that has had a conversation with other council members about a city administrator.
Are you, are you asking me a question?
I'm not even asking you. I already, I already, I already know what the answer is.
No, no, I have had discussions about a city administrator. It is not the same thing as a chief administrator.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking you a question.
Or a chief of staff.
So, so, so.
But you were alluding to me.
The city administrator cost 75,000 more dollars. So I'm not afraid to get up and, I thank Councilwoman Juwan for getting up here and saying it because if it's all about dollars and cents, what was being thought about or done from a, a council member who just admitted is talk to other people about a position that costs even more. That is fact. Secondly, secondly, the 211,000 dollars, last year on Monday, on Monday, we have a planning session for a 2030 vision plan for city council and city staff. The 50,000 dollars that was placed in the budget last year was for vision planning because if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Citizens have already, eight to 900 citizens have already completed the survey that a council member said has not even started yet. We've already had a planning session with some community members and already have several different sessions planned throughout this entire city because you have to have a vision. What is 2030 going to look like in the city of Waterloo if you don't have a vision? We are trying to get as many voices as we possibly can to fill out the survey, let people know what do you want to see for the future. 2030, you go to the website, it's there. So to say that that is not actually being done, that's another one of the things where you can say something and get away with it, but I can't afford to do that. We are working on that plan right now. And then for this year, that is not an additional amount of money that was added. That money, that 50,000, has been reduced to 35,000. I heard the gentleman get up here a little while ago and said, we got great things here. I wish we would be able to market this community and get the word out about the incredible things taking place. That's what that money was for and it's actually been reduced. When you look up there and you see the point eight, that is for the communications director who's already working 50 hours a week on a part-time, on a part-time amount. That was just moving it up, not even to full-time, but just moving it up. Some of you have been through the residence academy where we are opening up and showing you exactly what's taking place. That was done by the communication. There's multiple departments around here that are lean on this particular position, not just my, my, just not my position. And so that's tangible benefits about getting the word out to what we're doing, but it's easy to sit here and say that that's something new to create. We just increased the amount of hours and still not paying that position for the 40, 45 hours that that position is actually working. With regards to the position, whether it's chief of staff, director of business operations, business, that is going to help with the overall efficiencies that are taking place that we have been moving towards with the restructuring. We are not reducing the authority of the mayor. That's what a chief, that's what a city administrator, a city manager does. That's not what's being proposed here. And so I step back because council, okay, let's have more say, let's work this out. And so that is what is being done right now. Okay, so a couple of things. With regards to Met Transit, as was mentioned a little bit earlier, Met Transit receives an allocation of dollars from the city. They asked for an additional 47.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand dollars. And that was originally in the additional staff request, but because our CFO is engaged in working with the director and the fact that they did receive some cares money, then that 43,000 was taken off and they're operating just like they did before. That's where that came from. With regards to the mechanic, couple, several years ago, there was a vote not to hire a mechanic. But once I said we'd move the division manager, he hired a fleet, a fleet supervisor where they can take a look at the work and what's being done, how it's being done, to make sure they're operating, not just efficiency as in reducing the amount of money, but what are the overall needs within that department? I've had conversations with multiple department heads who have had some tough times getting their work done with cars or with trucks or whatever they have. We're at the point now where we are moving towards preventative maintenance versus having to play a ton of catch-ups. See, and that's what happens when you talk to the department heads and to staff. It's easy to sit in another seat and throw out something because it sounds good to get an applause, but the buck stops where you got to get the work done. And we've been getting the work done in that area. So that's the truth, that is the factual documentation. Whether we nod our heads this way or not, that's actual facts. And then what was the next one? The inspector. Correct. Absolutely correct on that. That's why we just formed a team and we found funding to come together to have another housing inspector, safety inspector. That's being done right now and it's not going to require more money out of your general fund to get that done. And that will be brought to you within the next month. So that's what, that's the reality of what's actually happening. So, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Mister Mayor.
Vote on the amendment.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In response, first of all, these weren't willy-nilly things that I threw out. I talked to the workers and I get my information from the workers. You get your information from department heads, but since you've been mayor, you have ensconced yourself with a nice little buffer that allows you to have managers that are responsible to you. The city council in the city of Waterloo has completely diminished, been diminished in their legislative duties and responsibilities under your leadership. That's not okay. And what you're doing tonight with this chief of staff is you're extending it one more layer under you to, to make decisions. This city council, we've lost our legislative ability through the measures that you have taken, getting rid of standing committees, taking the meetings from four meetings a month down to two meetings a month. And now you're doing this. And at the same time, you're delay hiring and you're getting rid of another mechanic for all practical purposes. That's not okay. It, it, it is a situation where there's more managers and less hands-on people. The people of Waterloo need hands-on people and less managers. That's what I am asking by this amendment, is that we don't hire one more manager, but that we use that money if you want to, or if this council wants to, to make sure that we have hands-on people.
With regards to the comment about. So what I'm hearing, even if we don't need a position, that we still keep a person. Secondly, secondly, standing committees. We had standing committees where we had three council members on those standing committees. If two council members have a conversation about that, then that, that is considered an open meeting. Instead of having the standing committees, why not bring it all in front of the city council so that all seven members can have conversation? We will have one standing committee that goes here, then we bring it to the full council where you really can't be engaged, but we have all of those in plain sight with the entire city council members present. So we have a amendment by Mister Morrissey. Would you please read that again so council? No, sir.
Kelly, do you want me to do that or you want to do it?
Go ahead, Pat.
Well, my amendment is to remove from the budget in front of us, in the mayor's budget, 211,000 dollars for that chief of staff position and an additional 35,000 from that 50,000 that hasn't even been used up this year, so, from last year's budget. So it's a total of 211,000 or a drop in the levy rate of approximately nine cents so that we are down to a levy rate of 18.54.
All right. And that's been second. And just for clarification, Waterloo has hired de novo to do our 2030 vision plan. Once they complete it, they'll get paid the entire amount. Please tune in Monday and you can see our very city council members and department heads doing their portion of the strategic planning. So just so you all know, that's what's happening on Monday and will continue. But Madam Clerk, on the amendment.
Mister Amos.
No.
Mister Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mister Foyce.
No.
Mister Greider.
No.
Mrs. Juwan.
No.
And Mister Bozen.
No.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Madam Clerk.
Mister Morrissey.
No.
Mrs. Klein.
No.
Mister Foyce.
Yes.
Mister Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan.
Yes.
Mister Bozen.
Yes.
And Mister Amos.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor. All right. We adjourn. Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens, for stopping in as well.